Public Health England, PHE, Centre for Radiation, Chemical and Environmental Hazards, CRCE, take the lead on public health matters associated with radio frequency, electromagnetic fields, radio waves used in telecommunications. PHE advises the government on all aspects of public health, including exposure to radio waves, the appropriate standards of protection for the general population, and any measures necessary to protect sensitive groups. PHE inherited this responsibility from the former Health Protection Agency, HBA, and it continues to provide a range of public information about radio frequency topics. We have invited external speakers to present to the committee about this item. Cambridge Brown from the Adversal Body, Royal UK, Paul Coates from BT, who will give an industry perspective on 5G agenda. Alison Bell from Somerset Cancer Clinic's Public Health Team will also extend to the committee the advice available to central government for PHE about the matter. We have also received several questions from members of the public to speak on items, and I will give our speakers the opportunity to respond to these.
First thing, are friends electric? Well, I can assure you they are. So am I, and so are you, and our brainwaves connect to the Schumann waves from the ionosphere in a symbiotic relationship with matching low frequencies, which is crucial for brain functioning. The Schumann is connected to lightning and climate change, which rests upon a natural unchanging electromagnetic field, and NASA have said this. Pulse technology takes no account of these delicate interconnections in several magnitudes more powerful. 5G is tested in an anechoic chamber when nature is shut out, no birds, no bees, no plants to validate safety, no humans, no existing ELS, extreme low frequencies. ICNER's guidelines for ELS recognise electrostimulation to the peripheral nerves and central nervous system and the heart. It's not just about domestic electricity in these guys. Electrostimulation in these guys are discussed by the IEEE Special Committee, talking about pulse and square waves. PHE confirm mobile phones emit 2.8 Hz, 8.34 Hz, and wifi 10 Hz. These are in the delta and alpha waves, and the hypothalamus, which regulates biological rhythms and impulses and metabolism. So the question is, is SAR the same as the metabolic rate? But PHE say we have to be able to demodulate these signals, essentially pick out the low frequency part. They say it's unlikely we can do this. So this is the only part of the contention. IEEE don't agree with their position. They say neurons and neuronal networks are particularly sensitive to ever weak modulations, which are found to be biologically significant. Frequency resonance has been demonstrated through EEG, showing demodulation on the alpha and beta waves at the International Conference on Magnificism in 2009. Chief author of ICNER, Riley, thinks we should look further with electrostimulation to include the small fibre nerves. So we have a situation here where one in 10 people over 55 have unexplained small fibre neuropathy. Harvard and King's College equate small fibre neuropathy with fibromyalgia, which affects up to 2 million people in the UK. So even before we even think about introducing 5G...
30 seconds.
...we will be specifically the exact electrostimulation site as ELS, the nociceptors, the receptors of the skin, which are the pinheads of the peripheral nerves. We need to investigate the existing technologies doing to the nerves of the people, especially because already 40% over the safe limit with the staircase error. So we need to ask them to be referred to the civil officer with a call for evidence for the point of demodulation, which is crucial to harm.
Okay, this question was received late, and so we will respond in writing to the individual. However, as we stated at the beginning, Public Health England is responsible for the government advice on this technology, and so it's best that when you have these technical queries, you refer those to Public Health England, CRCE. Thank you very much indeed. Our next speaker is...
5G will add an extra layer of electromagnetic microwave radiation on top of what we already have, and what we already have is causing biological harm. Is it no wonder that life expectancy in the UK has now slowed and even declined in some areas? Is it no wonder that early onset dementia and Alzheimer's disease is rapidly growing in younger adults? Is it no wonder that in the UK cancer is now the most common cause of death in children aged 1 to 14 years? And brain tumors claim more lives than any other? Is it no wonder that the world's insects are hurtling down the path to extinction, and fertility rates are dropping all over the Western world? Let's all look up from mobile phones and question, what has changed in the last 30 to 20 years? 5G will exacerbate all these issues. Do we really want driverless cars? And do we really need our toaster to speak to our fridge? Where is our democratic choice? Where has it been placed in regard to all of this? So-called technological advancements do not always work, as we have seen with smart motorways. 5G means a densification of infrastructure within our communities, outside schools and in children's playgrounds. It has well documented there are cancer clusters around cellphones' hammers. Why aren't we safeguarding our children? This is madness. Do we really want a constellation of 53,000 plus satellites surrounding our precious planet like a cage? Do we have any idea how this will affect the ionosphere and the weather? In 2011, the World Health Organisation and the International Agency for Research on Cancer classified electromagnetic fields as possibly carcinogenic to humans, a group 2B. This was based on increased risk of glioma, a type of brain cancer associated with mobile phone use. One of the WHO scientists, Professor Anthony Miller, now states the evidence published since 2011, that those requirements to reclassify electromagnetic fields as a group 1, known carcinogenic to humans. Professor Miller is not scaremongering. He is most certainly not operating on the margins of accepted scientific thinking. He is one of the world's leading cancer epidemiologists. He is a trusted advisor to the US Brain Tumor Association. Professor Miller says 5G technology is being rolled out in communities without health or environmental impact having been evaluated. Strange. Were you being saturated with radiation and a moratorium on the role of 5G's essential? My question is, would the Stuarts Council please, therefore, task and finish your to thoroughly investigate 5G technology and protect the citizens of Somerset? Our next speaker is Neil, a chartered engineer with a master's degree in electrical engineering from Imperial College and 37 years' experience in aerospace, nuclear system and safety design.
Okay, so as a chartered engineer, I've got responsibility for the public in regard to safety. I've suffered the effects of wireless radiation on my family over the last 13 years, over which time I've been looking into this particular problem and discussing it with leading scientists around the world. Mobiles, wifi, etc. emit pulses of polarised microwave radiation from 600 megahertz to up to gigahertz. The pulse frequencies are extremely low frequencies, and are 2 for 8, 10, 217 Hz, and many more due to multiple sources in the environment. All of those signals illuminate biological structures. The radiation is absorbed by biological structures. The pulses are bioactive, as acknowledged by the Stuart Report 2000, section 5. And believe it or not, the lower the frequency, the lower the power needed to have an effect. The mainstream scientific opinion on health implications are that there is a major problem. Two-thirds of all reports, at least, report biological effects of this wireless radiation. Data pieces such as PubMed or Bioinitiative, IET in 2014, two-thirds of all reports. I've got a CD of hundreds of reports and lists here.
Excuse me, can we just ask him really to put for us to hear, maybe raise the level just a little bit? Sorry to interrupt.
That's not on...
It's got on now.
Okay. Shout louder. Okay, sorry. The symptoms are numerous: headaches, memory problems, sleep disorders, tinnitus, and severe fatigue, and concentration problems. I know I've experienced many of these, and many others I know have too. It's also proven to be linked with long-term conditions such as cancer, Alzheimer's, immunosuppression, neurological diseases and digestive disorders. The NTP and Ramazini studies in recent years have linked wireless with cancer. A significant mechanism is the voltage gated calcium channel effect related to calcium effluence, related to oxidative stress, DNA damage and neurological effects. All current guidelines point to ICNER 1998, and these do not recognise biological effects, only heating effects. The FCC in the States has started work on looking at biological effects in 2013 and gave up, and is not interested in it. Public Health England reports are inaccurate. Comer only spends a few hours on it a year. The WHO class is at Class 2 carcinogen. The chief medical officer recommends children minimize their use of wireless. The Council of Europe recognises EHS. 5G millimetric wave will create massive more exposure levels and cause SAR issues, and the current limits will not, it will go over the current limits, which ICNER wants to increase. ICNER presented guidelines...
Thank you very much, Mr Boxall.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Wireless is environmental pollution. Thank you very much.
While we're here, we understand the government is firmly committed to the rollout of 5G infrastructure and the internet of things. We've come to you, our councillors, as a first line of defence, our primary care, or at least our first line of questioning, to ask you to ascertain that the government has done its homework on this project. As a council, are you entirely confident that all aspects of 5G and the internet of things are fit for purpose, safe to use, and not damaging to the environment? Will you ascertain this is truly about what enhances life and not just about money and unsustainable growth? Two, what kind of world? The BBC News this morning has a headline, "New rules could spell the end of throwaway culture." We gather that 5G and the internet of things will involve 20,000, at least, possibly 50,000 new satellites orbiting the earth. I understand these do not have an unlimited life and will need replacing regularly. It will also involve the wastage of millions of electrical devices, not just phones and computers, but kitchen whiteboards, lighting, TVs and audio equipment. None of these we have now will be compatible with 5G technology. Is it also the case that millions of vehicles will need to be scrapped to make way for electric driverless motoring? We're reminded almost daily by people as diverse as David Attenborough and Rita Thunberg that this is unsustainable. To what extent does this seriously interfere with Somerset's and the nation's aspirations for a greener environment? Three, what kind of society? We are the most watched, spied upon, photographed, monitored population in human history. We understand that smart devices are smart because they collect and send data about us to those who would like to sell us things, as well as to governments and other bodies. What assurance have councillors received that information held will be secure? How much scrutiny are councillors prepared to accept on our behalf as well as their own, before it becomes intrusive and interferes with civil liberties?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr Boxall. Our next speaker is Jonathan Burns.
Government energy statistics demonstrate that generation losses from power station to plug socket are roughly two-thirds. If a power station is 50% coal, 50% gas generation, as Somerset are in the UK, how will all electric cars save energy? This disregards the mining of air metals and elements, usually in politically divergent countries or endangered habitats, just for wireless devices and electric car batteries. Creating endlessly for recharging and standby energy usage for internet streaming, download, mobile phoning and texting, projections of 150 billion mobile devices worldwide are set for a larger energy footprint than the entire global aviation industry. Harvesting, transporting and storing massive amounts of 5G data comes at a price. By 2025, server farms will be using 20% of global energy generation. These buildings need no heating, but often require large cooling systems. Like the prefix "smart," these clouds mask an unfluffy adverse energy equation. A 5G base station expects to consume roughly three times as much power as a 4G base station. With 5G mesh densification, more and larger base stations are needed to cover the same geographical area. Energy monitoring systems really are not that energy savings, constantly powered by electrically generated wifi and Bluetooth for pointless continuous data transport. 5G densification is a huge threat to the much-wanted political savings made by budget-squeezed local authorities converting HID and SOM streetlights to LEDs. In upgrading the number of streetlights, normally a factor of three is to be counted, because of the 150 metre maximum distance between lampposts to ensure full saturation of the neighbourhood with perpetual wireless signal. Electrical cabinets controlling this infrastructure will rise in number considerably. We've threatened additional real-time wireless streamed advertising on many lights generated from your harvested digital data. Will local authorities foot the bill for the massive increase required in energy required to run this grid all year round, cancelling energy savings against revenue? 5G-enabled streetlighting with phased arraignment wireless technology uses 3,300 watt relays and heavy-duty 450 volt capacitors, with wiring synonymous with prodigious energy consumption. Wherever there is heat, there is also wasted energy. The internal wiring diameter evidences this dissipating heat generated by high voltage. The typical mobile tower base station cabinets' power cable installations are numerous and very large in diameter. This is before the larger 5G masks enter service. How on this earth will we find all the generated capacity to implement this energy as a global revolution with its full-time powered smart?
Instructed by the US government, the National Toxicology Programme was asked to find out whether exposure to microwave radiation was safe. 20 years later, with a budget of over $20 million US dollars, the national toxicology data shows clear evidence, i.e. the highest scientific proof, that exposure to microwave radiation is carcinogenic. This data also puts into disrepute the ICNER and Public Health England viewpoint that non-ionising radiation is not dangerous because it is capable of damaging DNA, as well as dissuading of other adverse biological effects. The National Toxicology Programme tested 3,000 rats in mice for two years. The most comprehensive assessment, two days, of health effects in animals exposed to radio frequency radiation. Animal studies receive huge amounts of funding in science since they are the most reliable test subjects to assess the level of risk from toxins to human health. This study proved wrong the prevailing assumption that wireless radiation and non-thermic exposures is incapable of causing adverse effects. European investigators at the Ramazzini Institute in Italy were similarly ambitious. In their recent study, they investigated radio frequency effects in nearly 2,500 rats from the foetal stage until death. Both studies confirm that radio frequency radiation, microwave radiation, exposure has biological effects, states John Sanet, a professor of preventative medicine and dean of the Colorado School of Medical Health. The NTP study provides the most compelling evidence yet that microwave radiation is linked to cancer in lab rodents, the strongest finding connected microwave radiation with heart cancer in male rats, but the researchers also reported elevated rates of lymphoma, as well as cancers affecting the prostate, skin, lung, liver and brain cancer in the exposed animals. IARC, the International Agency for Research on Cancer, which is part of the World Health Organisation, have been critical of the National Toxicology Programme and have downplayed their findings in relation to the effects of radio frequency radiation, microwave radiation on humans. The World Health Organisation rely on unscientific economic guidelines which do not take into account non-thermic exposures, neither 24-hour exposure. Also, ICNER have a legal disclaimer on their website. However, despite IARC criticism, there have been additional human studies, including Serenat study showing the increased risk of gliomas. Another Canadian study shows risk of glioma, and this was not affected by selection or recall bias. Incidence of glioblastoma of brain cancer, France and the temporal lobe doubled in England between 1995 and 2015. So what does the public need to know? They need to know that there'd be multiple increases in cancer incidence associated with exposure from hyperradiation in animals and humans. Cancer risk is even greater to children due to the more vulnerable brains of children and the fact that the developing nervous system of children is more susceptible to tissue damaging agents. With 5G, this will greatly increase our exposures.
There are serious security and privacy issues to fully consider before allowing 5G in Somerset. Ann Queen, a cybersecurity expert, says the danger of people from other side of the globe being able to control your driverless car and hacking into your personal data from all your connected devices is a real concern with 5G. He says much more strenuous testing of cyber vulnerabilities is needed, and defenses should be built into these devices, and this is not happening because there's a rush to market by the manufacturers. He says ransomware problems, this is when you have to pay to get a virus removed from your device, will be on the increase with 5G. Can you imagine what it would be like to have to pay to restore and get your car, your driver's car back on the road and any other devices that you have? He says it's like a cat and mouse game, and every new piece of software produced, there is a hacker in the wings with the ability to attack far outweighs our ability to defend. O2 reported that hackers have been able to raid bank accounts because the mobile app software, the banking, had a specific failure in it. So this is what we're going to be facing times 100 when it comes to 5G. He says that 5G networks could well become a hackers' playground. And even if the software is initially secure, do we want to spend our time doing lots of updates on all our devices to maintain that security? We have our online searches and conversations reflected back to us in pop-up adverts, as it is. Can you imagine shopping in the family, shopping centre, which has got a 5G test there at the moment, where your every move and your every purchase is recorded? Just how will this information be used? Is this the future for our benefit? Is this what we want in Somerset? Do we exactly know how the data being collected by sensors on our lamppost, including face recognition and voice recognition? Do we know how this data is going to be used? And I'll be confident that there are regulations in place to keep our personal information safe. Our data is already being sold for the development of artificial intelligence. Where do you want what we're able to keep track of? And when we click yes to those terms and conditions, I really don't think that we know where that data is going. Google and Facebook are facing and also being complicit to genocide in China, and Brin and Page, their founders, have just recently resigned after this case was brought. Holland is taking their government accord, naming 76 laws which are broken by the 5G bottlines. And this case can easily be replicated in this country because after all, the technology is the same.
I'm covering a few points regarding the health risks of 5G, especially for children. Please have your children, grandchildren and loved ones in mind. Thousands of scientists and doctors from 203 nations have signed the international appeal to stop 5G in space and on earth, which was recently handed in to Tendour and Street. Today, I'm handing a list of names of scientists, professors and doctors who have all come to the scientific conclusion that microwave radiation causes DNA damage and therefore can be detrimental to our health. Microwave radiation far below the ICNER guidelines can result in carcinogenicity, brain tumours, glioma, breast cancer, leukaemia, then genotoxicity, DNA damage, DNA repair inhibition, mutagenicity and birth defects, neurodegenerative diseases such as Alzheimer's disease, neurobehavioural problems, autism, reproductive problems, miscarriages, oxidative stress, inflammation, blood-brain barrier disruption, disruption of menetone production, sleep disturbance, headache, irritability, fatigue, concentration difficulties, depression, dizziness, tinnitus, burning and flushed skin, digestive disturbance, tremor, cardiac irregularities, adverse impact on neural, circuitry, immune and cryoskeletal systems. Prior to making any decisions in regard to the rollout of 5G, could you please find the answer based on scientifically peer-reviewed evidence to the following question? What is the safe level of microwave irradiation for the ovarian follicles during the first 100 days development of the embryo? There are more than 10,000 peer-reviewed studies on the negative health effects of microwave radiation. There are 18 papers by Professor Martin Powell, all peer-reviewed and published specifically on the damaging effects of microwave radiation on fertility. On the 100th day, the female fetus has already developed all immature eggs in its ovaries, which means that the future grandchildren of the pregnant woman are already being impacted at this very early stage. Can we be certain that the microwave radiation that 5G would bring is not going to cause harm to the DNA of these immature eggs? So what is the safe level of microwave irradiation during these first 100 days of development of the embryo? The future of humanity, the healthy or unhealthy DNA of future generations, and certainly the future of our children and grandchildren may depend on the answer to this important question. Dear councillors, I'm asking you to work together with us, with your local community, so that we can together protect our children from overexposure to microwave radiation.
So I'll be giving you a brief outline, supporting questions I've been structurally about PHE, and more importantly, their advisory body, the International Commission of Non-Ionising Radiation Protection, which I will now refer as ICNER. Now, so ICNER is an NGO based in Germany, that's 14 members. ICNER is not a medical body. Most of its members have electronics backgrounds. For example, the current UK representative, Dr Simon Mann, has degrees in electronics, not medicine. ICNER does not carry out any independent research into safety itself, and yet, councillors, ICNER sets the safety limits, which PHE, Ofcom and the WHO and the industry adhere to. And these limits are set dangerously high, hundreds of thousands of times higher than other countries and organisations. Why is this? Incredibly, ICNER are basing their guidelines on 20-year-old research that exposed a full-grown man, he was a marine, for only... grown man, he was a marine, for only six minutes. There was no heating effect and this is thermal. Therefore, it is safe. It doesn't equate with the world we now live in or the increased exposure we are and will be subject to, especially as we've seen children. ICNAB ignores the vast amount of scientific findings that clearly and convincingly show harmful effects and intensity is well below their safety limits and guidelines. Crucially, why do they ignore the thousands of non-thermal studies that show cellular, physiological and biological damage? Why is the science being ignored? Is it because ICNAB is a revolving door with the telecommunications industry, a captive agency, as we say in diplomatic terms? Its opinions are not objective, not representative of the body of scientific evidence, they cherry pick studies that have a bias and favour of the telecoms industry, but don't take my word for it. As recently as January 2020, an Italian appeal court in Turin refused to accept evidence of ICNAB plus conflicts of interest. The court did not consider ICNAB to be a reliable witness. It's like the fox looking after the hen house. No testing, no regulations, no safety standards and no risk assessment has been done on 5G. What else goes to the public without this? These man-made, being-forming, pulsed and modulated microwaves are and will be causing biological damage to our wildlife and importantly, our pollinators. The science is without question and we are being exposed to this 24/7 with no let up, no escape and no way out. And the NGO that gives us our safety limits is incredible. To conclude, councillors, please help us. Please help the people of Somerset. We can't protect us and future generations by ourselves. We need your help.
The next speaker is Lucy White. Imagine a silent world, a world with no birds, no bees, trees gone or dying. This is the world we are moving into and while ecologists have discounted climate change, a factor not being considered is exposure to wireless radiation from mobile phone masts etcetera. And here in the countryside, we are incredibly vulnerable with the intensification of 4G. It really is the death knell for birds and bees. And we want to ask Somerset County Council if they are aware of three key ways that radiation affects wildlife, namely the DNA damage that we've been hearing about because no living organism can cope with the pulsing and that includes birds and bees. The interference with the earth's magnetic field which interrupts their abilities to navigate because all creatures have magnetite in their bodies and the loss of habitat because you will be forced to remove trees to make way for better signals and that is an appalling event that's going to happen. In terms of DNA damage, it affects fertility, so means birds and bees don't reproduce as easily and we are seeing events like colony bee collapse disorder increase and these sort of things. The one that I really want to bring to your attention is the experiment of a Spanish biologist who placed two groups of frog eggs 140 metres away from masts. So this is a real life experiment. He observed these two groups for two months. One was protected in a variety cage and one was left exposed. The protected group all had orbiting and they had about 4.2% mortality. In the exposed group, there was weird growth, some were too big, some were too small and there was a mortality rate of 90%. At 140 metres, that is further away than the people in Wales who are contesting the masts in the school playing field who live at 40 metres away from it. So this is what we really want to bring to your attention and we want to know what Somerset County Council is doing to preserve biodiversity as is required to do. And also want to bring to your attention that if the cider harvest fails due to a lack of pollinators, there will be a riot in Somerset and we really don't want to watch super fast downloads of nature films to work out what we've been missing. Thank you.
My name is Sir Chris Martin-Pal, I'm retired. I used to be an engineering manager at Procter &amp; Gallow. I was in that capacity, I conducted five risk assessments, non-ionising radiation, back in 2017. This was under the control of electromagnetic fields, the workout. This is actually force of law, I don't like ICNAB guidelines. So I'd like to talk about the insurance industry. The insurance industry has a clear view and understanding of risk. They have top quality research units who know how to conduct risk analysis and to run the numbers. Back in the 1990s, lawyers in London had an near-death experience when claims for harm caused by asbestos contained. This globe claims nearly destroyed lawyers, they have no intention of repeating this. This may be why lawyers introduced their exclusion clause 32 for their underwriters, which states, "The electromagnetic field exclusion is a general insurance exclusion and is applied across the market standard. The purpose of the exclusion is to exclude coverage of illness caused by continuous, long-term, non-ionising radiation exposure through mobile phone access." Swiss Re has a similar view. Back in 2013, in their stone document, they stated, "If a direct link to health effects were established, it would open doors to new claims that ultimately lead to large losses." Swiss Re classified the potential risks as high over a timeframe of 10 years plus from 2013. Insurance companies are a kind of early warning radar. If claims strict or refuse non-ionising radiation insurance, the biological harm end there is very agreeable. They quite correctly factor in changes in the regulatory environment, that is lowering of the currently wide open exposure there that will impact revenues. Also, anticipatory to adopt two complaints made on insurance in the street after 2020. The insurance industry has performed their due diligence and conducted risk analysis based on their aggregated peer reviewed science and quite clearly see a very, very high financial risk to their finances. Their original risk analysis in 2010 was very concerned that non-ionising radiation would become the new asbestos. They see the potential for financial loss, the asbestos claims have been affected this form occasionally. The potential claims against the wireless industry are increasingly, and increasingly end users could be from the general population of large. The worst risk you can take is the one you do not see or acknowledge. Thank you, this is perhaps the clearest signal yet, this is the truth and signal about hazards of non-ionising radiation. Given the scale of the infrastructure being rolled out for 5G, insurance companies stand to make very large profits. As of 2014, 60% of the underwriters refused cover. And yet, although they can insure, most will not insure against anything that has harm. After 2015, under exclusion clause 32, in fact, it was near impossible to get cover for the harmful effects of non-ionising radiation. The insurance industry are voting with their feet, can simply walk away from 5G and non-ionising radiation in general.